Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
He's here, sir.
And Mr. Lockwood?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
I got two.
We do have some extras. At our last meeting, we adopted goals for the redistricting process. Since that meeting, staff has been working to develop some redistricting options for you, following the goals that you adopted at your last meeting. Just a brief update of where we are with the census. Our official population is 22,945 residents in the county, which is a 24 and 1/2% increase from the 2010 census. This map just shows, and it's a recap of last meeting, where we are as far as our populations. As you can see, District 3 experienced the most growth. District 5 experienced the least growth, but still a significant amount of growth. And I think you'll see in the examples that I'm about to show, the options that I'm about to show, that the majority of the changes really are with District 3 trying to decrease population and District 5 taking on additional population. Each option, though, does have minor adjustments in the other districts, too, which I'll walk you through. Our ideal size goal for each district, based on our goal of obtaining equal population in each of the districts, our ideal size is 3,685 residents per district. That's our mark. I'm sorry. That was 2011. It's 4,589 residents per district. That's our mark and our goal. This slide just shows which districts have to gain and which districts have to lose, and you have this slide in your package from your last meeting. Yes? Okay. One of our goals and one of the things that we are looking at closely in accordance with the Voting Rights Act is the minority population. So in all the options, we'll be showing you the impacts to the black populations in the county. During the previous elections, we've always have tried to obtain a majority-minority district, mainly because back in, I believe, the 1990 census, you've had that. And due to the way that we've grown over time, we haven't been able to sustain that. But we're still, for at least District 3, or at least to obtain one district, to stay, to do the best we can in keeping, moving towards a majority-minority district. As you can see, in District 3 right now, the black percentage is 22.58%. And you all have this map in front of you. And as I go through the options, I'll be referencing that number, too. The good thing is, and most of the options that we're going to present to you, that percentage actually increases. I am going to stand. And I'll pause because I won't be, may not be picked up on the microphone.
I got two. You want one?
But I'd like to go over to the screen and kind of highlight and point to the proposed changes. Thank you.
Hello? Testing?
Okay.
This is our first option, Plan 1. In Plan 1, the majority of the change is between District 3 and 4. Again, there are some slight tweaks in the other districts as well. But in Plan 1, basically, this area right here was formerly District 3, and that's Farmer's Drive. We've changed that border to Polish Town Road. So District 5 has picked up more population, but more land as well. District 3 has lost, and the border now would be Polish Town Road. Also, currently, District 3 kind of swoops in here, too, and takes into this area, south of Interstate 64. That area becomes District 5 now as well. So everything south of Interstate 64 would now become District 5, Mount Pleasant being the boundary line. So District 3 also changes a little bit because District 3 backs up, and basically, Mount Pleasant is now a boundary, and you retain Brickshire community, but you do lose some of the rural area east of Brickshire. District 4, I'm sorry. And I was looking at Mr. Steers, but District 4.
So, Mr. Steers and I share Mount Pleasant.
I'm on the west side, you're on the east side.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Going to my current one.
So what this is saying, from what I...
District 4.
Will take all of, you'll have all of Mount Pleasant Road, and you'll lose it, that's on this plan? What now?
No. District 4 stays the same. I apologize. But District 3, who's on the other side of Mount Pleasant currently, all that goes to District 5 now. So, now, where District 4 does change, and I'm sorry, I got a hit of myself, when you go to the southern part of District 4, District 4 would take in Ed Allen's campground area. Also, that Mobile Home Park, I think it's Allen's Road, now becomes your boundary. Rockahawk still remains, and the Colony still remains in District 5. But District 4 takes in Ed Allen's and the Mobile Home Park just to the east of Ed Allen's campground.
Okay, so let's go back to...
Okay.
You just gotta walk through this. So let's go back to Farmer's Drive and Polish Town.
Yes.
So now, I don't have anything on Farmer's Drive. I just have Polish Town Road.
That's correct.
Cool. Okay.
Not much of Polish Town. Polish Town is...
Yeah, it's on.
Because of Polish Town.
Right here.
Right. Just this part of Polish Town. On the other side of the 30.
Right. Not on the dock side. I mean, not on the prison side.
On the prison side.
Or had to be on the prison side. Okay. Go ahead.
And we're gonna talk about the prison, too. A little bit later, we're gonna talk about the prison number as well.
Oh, here we go.
For District 1, the new boundary now, would take in Cumberland Road, Cumberland Hospital, to the west side of that. Mrs. Page would still keep the east side of Cumberland Road. So therefore, the precinct of Mount... The church, I'm sorry.
Elam.
New Elam Church could still be a precinct because that would remain in District 3. But the west side of Cumberland would be taken in to District 1. And I've also noted here, too, it's not shown on here, but just to draw the boundaries a little cleaner, we'll probably include this area in District 1, too, just to kind of make the boundaries clearer. This is all marsh. So there's no residents there.
Thanks.
So...
Here we go.
That will probably be a change that you see the next time you see this map. Between District 1 and District 2, I'm sorry, District 1 and District 3, trying to keep all the districts in line. If you go to Airport Road, District 2 and District 3, if you go to Airport Road, what's being proposed is District 3 boundary would increase to Old Roxbury. This is Airport Road, Quinton Estates, which is currently the boundary of District 3. We would move that over to Old Roxbury. Also, District 1, District 1's boundary would lose. Looking at the roads, Peace Road would now become the boundary for District 1. Therefore, District 2, Mr. Tiller's district, would pick up this area right in here, which is Woods Edge subdivision. You would gain Woods Edge subdivision. And your boundary would be this road right here, which is Peace Road. Looking at this, looking at this proposal, and really, that's all the changes that's been proposed. This proposal is the one with the least changes to all the districts. This keeps all of the populations within our goal of a 5% deviation of our ideal goal population number. The minority number becomes 24.21. So we, for District 3, so we increase the minority population from 22.58 to 24.21. We also obtain our distribution of equal population goal and staying within the 5% deviation. And I started with this proposal because this is my preferred option. I'm gonna grab the mouse so I can move to the second. The second proposal is very similar as well, but it has a few more changes to Districts 1 and 2. Still, the majority of the changes in District 3 and 5. You may notice in District 1, you would take in a portion of Inotera. Well, that's all of Inotera, which is Land Bay 1 of Farms of New Kent. District 3, a change from the previous one. District 3 would take in, this is Criss Cross Road. There are a few. There is a subdivision off of this road that District 3 would take in and would take that from District 4. District 4, still, would take in Ed Allen's campground and the Mobile Home Park. I don't think that park has a name. Rockahawk stays in District 5.
District 3 would take in Roxbury Road? Right?
Roxbury Road for District 3.
Old Roxbury.
Old Roxbury, yes.
But Woodhaven Shores will remain in District 4?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
It's kinda chopped up to me. Looks kinda chopped up to me.
Yeah. This plan is a little more chopped up.
Yeah, y'all look like District 3.
Now, speaking of the plans being chopped up, I'm gonna go to District 3, I mean, Proposal 3, because I asked staff to look at a plan to, that would involve making the, each district more compact. So you don't have the winding districts and weaving districts throughout the county. So, in our attempt to make all the districts more compact, you'll see Proposal 3. Now, one thing Proposal 3 does, it decreases the minority population in District 3. But... And there's a significant change to the area District 1. Basically, the area west of Dispatch Road, District 1 would take on that area. District 2 would lose that area. District 2 would take on Woodhaven Shores. And District 3 would lose Woodhaven Shores.
Woodhaven Shores is in District 4?
I'm sorry. District 4 would lose Woodhaven Shores. District 2, again, would take on that area and making the...
It used to be in District 2 many years ago.
I believe it did at one time.
That's when Strain Trout ran against Becky Ringo.
No. But, you know, this was just an exercise. We wanted you to see of what it would look like if we drew the districts more, to be more compact. All right. Again,
Hopefully, it's been too much time.
Plan 1 is staff's preferred plan. We did want to present you with options.
Did you say 1 is the preferred?
1 is preferred. Plan 4 is just another deviation. The major change in Plan 4, the major difference in Plan 4 than the other plans that we've shown is pretty much this area here, this area here. As you can see, District 1 would take on a significant amount of new area here in the center of the county. District 3 would lose that. We're still proposing the same here as far as District 3 losing this area. District 5 taking on this area. Still proposing District 4 taking on Ed Allen's campground and the Mobile Home Park. District 5 keeping the Colonies and Rockahawk. This area here is a significant change where District 4 would lose the area to the west of Route 155, between Route 155 and Olivet Church Road. And District 3 would pick up that area. This is Olivet Church Road. This is Route 155. Currently, the line is in here for District 4. And it moves this line from here to 155 as being the boundary of District 3. So you would take on everything west of Route 155, or the west side of Route 155.
West?
No.
You got District 1 and some of the western 155.
Right. Right now, the 155 boundary, actually, it's not a road. I believe it's a creek that goes, cuts in between Olivet Church Road and Route 155. That's where the boundary is. So that boundary now is backed up to 155 as being the boundary. What I will do also, I've noticed on the maps, we'll put some road names on here. So when you review it on your time, you can have more of an idea where the boundaries are. Sorry. I think we've had some technical difficulties here, but I also want to offer to you, too, if you want to set up a time to meet with myself and Matt and GIS, what we can do with the software is if there's other options you want to look at, we can draw those lines and you can show, we can show you real time what the impact is as far as population and race and other demographics as well.
That's what I was gonna suggest, because I know we did that last time.
Yes.
You know, with each board member, Matt, and played with it a little bit. Then you could get a feel from how each board member felt and kind of come back.
Yes, yes, yes.
And so, and so since I touch everybody, I just want to be in all of them.
That's fine. But these options give you something to start with in the starting place. We have to have it done by the end of the year, so we don't have a lot of time. You know, the whole redistricting process, unfortunately, I don't think it's gone as smooth as the state has anticipated. We got the census data very late. But unfortunately, they're not able to push back the due date because by the Constitution of Virginia, we're required to have a redistricting plan submitted by the end of this year. We've also have identified a potential discrepancy also with the numbers. And I wanted to bring that to your attention because the numbers could potentially change. We're working with the Department of Legislative Services now, and it all deals with the count for the jail. In 2020, the General Assembly passed legislation that changed how we account for jails in the census. Basically, the new rule now is, we've always counted, previously, we've always counted jails in our census and redistricting numbers. That has always been a part of our count. The new rule now is the inmates are counted to the locality they resided in before they were incarcerated, if there's a known address. If they're out of state, they're counted towards New Kent. If there is no address or no known address for the inmate prior to incarceration, they're counted towards New Kent. So what the General Assembly stated is that as of a specific date in April, the Department of Corrections has to submit that data, incarceration data, to the Department of Legislative Services and there to provide an adjusted census number to all the communities in the state. We believe that there may be some issues with our adjusted number. We received an adjusted number, which increased our population by 73 residents, which we believe that 73 number is the number of prisoners at other facilities. But they resided in New Kent before they were arrested. The problem with our number is Henrico Jail East. That number did not change. That block group did not change. That block group did not change. There's 526 resident inmates at the time the census data was collected at Henrico Jail East. And currently, that entire 526 is being counted towards New Kent County in that one particular block group. And in District three. So we don't believe that that is correct, but unfortunately, it appears it might be a number we have to live with. Have not gotten a straight answer of how that number can be changed. But we are talking with the Department of Legislative Services on that. So I bring that to your attention because that's a significant number that we could potentially lose. And I, I recall from the invoices from the jail that I normally see, we're usually right around less than 100 prisoners, that they were paying a per diem rate. And I, I looked to the sheriff. I believe that number is usually around 85, and there's been spikes. Sometimes it's gone a little bit above 100. That, that's correct. That's, that, that, that's correct. But we don't believe that we have a true number from the jail right now, which is disturbing for us because that means what we're doing is not really representative of the census.
Yeah, really. So how do we go about correcting that?
Well, you know, the, the Code of Virginia grants that responsibility to the Department of Legislative Services for providing the adjusted census number. Have not gotten a straight answer yet from the Department of Legislative Services on how and if that number can be corrected at, at this time. So we are working with them. We hope within the next week or so, hopefully next week, we'll have a clearer picture of what can be done, if anything.
Because that number skews a lot more than just the district. I mean, that's everything across the board as far as population, including our, you know, House of Delegates, our congressmen and all that. So you would think that accurate number would be important to them.
Yes. It, it, it should be. Unfortunately, the work that they're doing already on the congressional district is based off of that, that number. I would hope that that number is important to them and that there is a way to adjust it, which puts more pressure on staff because as soon as we get that new adjusted number, we're going to have to work very quickly to make those adjustments in our redistricting plan as, as well.
Should we contact Scott Wyatt's office and Rob Whitman's, or have we already done that?
Mr. Lockwood, I have contacted the Division of Legislative Services and talked to their chief mapper who has provided this data. And from what I've been told, that the, the number that we got that were required by the code section 24.2-314 to use this adjusted number is supposed to take into account these variations both from New Kent inmates out of, that are in facilities outside of the county and adjust for inmates that are in New Kent that should be in other places. So that, gee, I've been told that this adjusted number does take that into account based on the data that they have. I was provided with the name of a contractor that Legislative Services used to do the, to calculate this number. And I provided it to staff. I don't know if you've had a chance yet to talk to this person, but have you, Rodney?
No, but I did leave a message with him yesterday.
Okay. So I think right now what I'm trying to do is, is just confirm that, that, that they think this adjusts for it or not, and then I'll go from there. But at the, at the end of the day, the, the statute says that we're to use the adjusted numbers that were given by Legislative Services, and that's, that's all it says. And so, yeah, I'm working on trying to find that answer out, but I don't, unfortunately don't have a solid one yet, Mr. Lockwood.
So we're going to change all, all of our lines based on 500 and some people that don't even vote.
That's the code requirement, yes. And that's how redistricting has been done in the past. In the past, that whole 520, that whole population of Henrico Jail East has been counted towards District three. Now, from what I can tell from the notes, because I wasn't part of the previous redistricting, you know, when we got into, and there were even notes regarding this, when we got into looking at the racial makeup of District three, the race population was pretty much even at Henrico Jail East. And even today with the current census, it's 56% minority, 44% white, which is not too far from even. So I don't know if it skews the, the racial percentages too much by including the jail, but it does throw off the total number as far as essentially you do have less voters.
So if we gave those to Mr. Lockwood, that's the only thing that had to change is Polish down road? I mean, really?
We, we can look at that. We could definitely look at that.
Probably do too.
Mr. Stairs? When you take, talking about Ed Allen's campground, how do you take in the population there? Because legally, there's not supposed to be any permanent residents in a campground, right?
Per our zoning ordinance. There are not supposed to be any residences, but the census collectors, they don't take into account our zoning ordinance. And we do know that there are people there staying an extended amount of time, which are being counted into the population of the census data, so.
Thank you.
All right. Does anybody else have anything on this? This is, I know this is going to have to be a quick process. So everybody can set up a meeting with Mr. Hathaway and Mr. Forbes. It won't take me but a few minutes. All right, next item, New Kent County, 2022 legislative, legislative agenda. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Sitting before you, you have a copy of the, of a draft 2022 legislative agenda. Really, there, there's one add to the agenda. Still, our top priorities being transportation funding for our secondary roads and for Interstate 64. A new item that I'm, I'm proposing is the ability to continue remote meetings of advisory boards and commissions. That is a hot topic amongst many of my peers in other, other localities. You know, we've all have gotten used to conducting virtual meetings through the pandemic time, but that was only allowed under the emergency order issued by the governor. We believe that there's value in virtual meetings. I believe that we've increased public participation through the use of virtual meetings. And I do think it's something that the, the state should look at continuing, at least for our commissions and committees. Not so much for our elected officials. We never really have met virtually, even though some localities have. But many of our committees and commissions have utilized the virtual meetings. And I think we've increased participation, we've increased attendance, and we've increased community input through virtual meetings. So I would like to see that be allowed.
So my question with that is, would that be, would that include all of the, the local boards?
It, this would, the way this is drafted, it would include all of your appointed advisory boards and committees and commissions.
So EDA planning?
Yes. Well, I kind of looked at this from a county standpoint, but if the laws are changed, it would impact the regional committees too.
Well, City of Richmond now has a resolution that they're under until December that, that they, they have the option to meet virtual. And so for our regional boards, the City of Richmond, under that ordinance, can meet virtually.
Yes, cities are treated a little bit different because of their charters. But generally, counties have to follow the governor's executive order. And Richmond has always kind of done their own thing as far as the pandemic and, yeah. And the state code right now allows localities that have adopted a state of emergency and have a continuing state of emergency to permit electronic meetings. So depends on the locality, but I assume from what Mrs. Page's comments, that Richmond still has a state of emergency due to the pandemic. And since the regional body is physically located in Richmond, they can continue to meet electronically. And the la- the last item on the legislative agenda is a, a request for the state to help out localities that rely heavily on groundwater, water withdrawals. As I've mentioned before, you know, the state is clamping down on groundwater withdrawal permits, really encouraging localities, pushing localities to move to a surface water option, which is expensive. And we're requesting that if the state is going to move us in that direction, that they provide some resources to assist us with that. I am not requesting that we take action on the legislative agenda today. I'm purely handing this out to you this morning, so you have the opportunity to review it. If there's anything you'd like to add to it, please let me know. Anything you'd like to take away from it, let me know.
One thing we talked about that I would like to add, and we talked about the truck weight on 249.
That's, that's, that's a federal, that's not a state.
Well, and see, the issue. Well, the i- issue is with that, as I understand it is, there is a limit on the federal roadways. There's no limit or less of a lim- limit on state roadways. So people are avoiding the federal roadways and utilizing the local roads. Now, if you wanted to increase the limit on the roadways here in New Kent, that could encourage people to stay on the highways, but I'm not sure if that's the route we want to go.
I want to increase it.
That, that wouldn't get you what you, what you want. You would need the, you need the federal people to increase the weight on the interstate.
But decrease the weight on?
We can't decrease the rate on state, state.
We can't decrease it on the interstate.
Or the state.
Because that's federal, right? But 249 is state, right? So we could decrease the weight on 249 or nothing.
But, but the problem is that I don't know if there is a weight limit on 249, or that, that weight limit is significantly less than what the weight limit is on the federal roads. That's why people are avoiding the federal.
It's more.
I mean, more, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It's, it's more.
You have 90,000 on, for people hauling wood products.
And 80,000 on the highway?
80,000 on the interstate. But you have to have a special, you have to get a special permit. South Carolina just did the same thing throughout the state.
I just.
No, I totally agree with, with just, I do think it's some bipartisan support for Whitman and Spanberger in getting that done. But, you know, you can haul 100,000 pounds with the, on the interstate, not, going on containers, but they let you haul the containers to port 100,000 pounds on the interstate legally.
I, I would like to bring this back before you at your December regular meeting for action.
I guess following up with that, Ms. Page, I guess you could ask for, got a no-through trucks.
Well, we could do a no-through trucks, yeah. But we can't do that now because we got full line.
But I don't think they're going to probably support it because 249 is a major, wouldn't you think Sheriff on that, because that's a major?
Well, we're going to bug VDOT on this, huh?
Well, on the federal side, yeah, we got to go on interstate. We need to go on to Whitman.
So no-through truck, we simply had to go to VDOT?
Right. And normally they wouldn't requ- I don't think they would.
Mr. Allen, what did South Carolina do?
I haven't, I haven't read, I know they, I don't know if they did the federal part of it yet, but I know they just went with the, I, I read that they went with the state on the 90,000 for wood products too. I just saw the article yesterday, but I know they're working as well with their federal partners, try to get it passed as well.
Nope, okay. Thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Hathaway?
Yes, thank you.
All right, next item, Resolution R-23-21, initiation of zoning ordinance amendment to establish solar farm performance standards. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At our last meeting, staff was asked to look at some performance standards for solar farm land uses. As you're all aware, we're getting more and more interest in the county from various groups regarding the development of solar farms. So this ordinance that you have before you, Resolution R-23-21 directs the planning staff and the planning commission to look at developing performance standards for solar farms. So these would be basic standards that every solar farm would have to follow. It doesn't take away your ability to add additional standards in the form of conditional use permits, but it kind of sets the base, basically. This is the bare minimum you have to do, but you still have additional controls through the conditional use permit process.
Do you know any other localities that are, are working on this?
Yes. I believe our, our zoning administrator has done some research and actually has sent me a paper from Prince George that's looking at implementing performance standards as, as well. And I believe there's others.
Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Hathaway, actually, I'm wondering, just, are we able to limit the size? Is that something that would be allowed for us to put in?
We.
An acreage limit on solar farms?
We, we will definitely look into that. We do put size limits on other land uses. So going into this without doing any research yet, I, I would think that, that we could. We'd limit the size of residential, uh, commercial buildings. In some districts, you can't build above 30,000 square feet. And if you go above that, you need other approvals, a conditional use permit. So I believe that we can, and we'll definitely take a look at that.
Because I know there have been some massive proposals for some of these solar farms that just eat up, looks almost like an entire county on, in some cases, so.
Yes.
It's a, it might be something to take into consideration when we're looking at this.
Ms. Tull?
Well, instead of limiting the size, because I know if they stay at a minimum, we don't have any benefit to the county, correct? As far as personal property? we don't have any benefit to the county, correct, as far as personal property?
If, if they, well, yeah, they, they have changed the laws recently too. That gives us a little more benefit for the smaller solar farm. And when I say smaller, um, the twenty megawatts or less. Um, historically, we haven't been able to assess a personal property tax uh, to those uses. Um, the state has given us some more authorities as being able to negotiate, which is, I call it a proffer. Uh, the state doesn't call that in, in their language, but we can negotiate.
But we can't ask for a proffer. Right?
Right, um.
Uh-oh. Yeah, there, there, there's been new legislation on solar farms, and there's two, two things that you can do now. One, you can choose to do a revenue share agreement or tax the value of the um, uh, materials that go in there. And you make that as a one turn, one time determination on how you're going to treat all solar projects. And on, in addition to that, there's code language that gives the uh, applicant the ability to offer essentially proffers in the form of donations in, in land or, or cash to the locality. And that's negotiated on a case per case basis. On top of that, as Rodney mentioned, uh, most localities require a conditional use permit for um, solar farms. And we would still have that ability to impose conditions and, and approve on a case by case basis. But what we're considering now is just the performance standards that are sort of the baseline um, for each project. And, and I have also looked and, and shared with Mr. Hathaway that some other localities have um, adopted performance standards. I think Prince George, Louise is one. Other localities just have it as a conditional use permit, but uh, they may be uh, looking into this performance standards as well. I'm not sure.
Could, could we also require that either the land owner or the, the whoever's building out the solar farm, that they're required to carry a bond to, to remove, I mean, so the big fear is that a lot of these places are going to go bankrupt at some point. And just abandon the field of solar panels, so.
We, we already require that.
Yeah. In the solar farms that, that we've approved, or solar farm that we've approved, uh, we did require a, a bond for that, yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, so, um, my only other request is that if, uh, if this is approved and the planning commission looks at it, I would ask that they also, um, in setting the standards, that they will review our comprehensive plan to make sure that, um, the standards that they write are, are standards that are within our strate- strategic plan.
We can do that.
Okay, Ms. Tiller?
Back to what Mr. Hefty said about, they could, I guess essentially say, okay, this is our proffer. We're gonna proffer this. And then if we say, well, no, that's not enough, then aren't we then asking for proffers anyway? I mean, could get into a bidding war how much we want or willing to accept.
Well, it's a good question, Mr. Tiller. I would say we, we take this on a case by case basis and see what they're proposing and, and see how we react to that without.
I don't want to get us in trouble.
No, we, we won't get in trouble.
Okay.
Alright, well, I, uh, I think this is something needed because I know we've had a lot of requests. I had a meeting, I think Ms. Lockwood has, Ms. Page, I think, with people interested in putting solar farms in the county, so. I think this is a good idea to help plan and us out to set some type of standards. No other discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt resolution R dash twenty-three dash twenty-one to initiate zoning ordinance amendment to establish performance standards for solar farms.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Any more discussion? If none, Ms. Watkins, poll members.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Next, comprehensive plan steering committee appointments. When are we looking to, to get this thing started?
As soon as the board is appointed. Uh, and, and actually, I, I mentioned at our last meeting, uh, that the planning commission has expressed an interest in moving forward with the procurement process for consultant. Um, Mrs. Rose, Rose, uh, the chairman of the planning commission has organized a meeting uh, for this evening and has asked me to attend, uh, to look at the RFP to finalize that so we can get it advertised, so. Um, it appears the planning commission is moving forward with the RFP. Um, the committee will start meeting once it's adopted and will be, hopefully it will line up that as soon as we bring on the consultant, the committee will be established so we can start working.
Alright. Anybody have any appointments? Mrs. Steers?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'm moved to appoint Nick Totten as a member of the comprehensive plan steering committee for District Four. I also, are we allowed to pick at large?
It's not by district, is what?
Yeah.
No.
I thought we had to have two at large.
It's two at large members.
Am I allowed to pick one at large?
Well, you, yeah, I mean, but it doesn't have to be by district, right?
No.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, also would like to pick, uh, Russell Byer as a member of the comprehensive plan steering committee for District Four. And I would like to, to pick Jackie Smith as an at-large member of the comprehensive plan steering committee. Also, we are, we were supposed to have a, a selection for someone from the AFD, right?
Uh, excuse me, I'm checking the charter to see if there was an at-large member. Okay, the um, membership of the comprehensive plan steering committee consists of two members of the committee.
It looks like it's still only two.
Appointed by the board members, uh, planning commission, two planning commission members, one EDA member and one AFD member. So, there are no at-large.
But the, the appointment can be out of your district.
Yes, yes, it can.
So, we get two appointments each, doesn't matter?
Okay.
And then there's, and it, you got AFD person?
I do, if that's okay with you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Jimmy Tally is the at-large member from the uh, AFD.
So, you need to take one? AFD, so you need to, to take one off, is that correct?
Well, I believe you had stated Jackie Smith, um, as your at-large appointment. But since we don't have an at-large, would you like to remove her or replace her with Nick Titan or Russell Byer?
I can do that. I, I, I thought we had an at-large also.
Not for the comprehensive plan.
Do what?
At-large on road viewers, okay.
Okay. Alright, Nick Titan and, um, Russ Byer. And Jimmy Tally from the AFD.
So, if we're appointing by district, what happens in January when the district lines change?
It's not appointed by district. Have to appoint by district? No.
Ms. Steers?
Do what?
Hit your mic.
So, I have an appointment. And I will move to appoint just follow as a member of comprehensive plan steering committee.
Uh, I have one. I'll move to appoint John Wilgus as a member of the comprehensive plan steering committee. Yeah, one, Ms. Tiller?
Yes, I'd like to appoint, uh, Mr. John Moyer to the comprehensive plan steering committee.
Is he appointed as a, is he appointed representative? Because we gotta have a planning commission member.
He was.
Should we, should we take a recommendation from the planning commission maybe to see who?
I thought at the meeting he said he wanted to do.
Oh, for the planning commission?
Well, he said he wanted to serve on the committee.
So, you're gonna need two more then? Is that what you want to do?
I don't think y'all had two more. I don't think Keller had two more for the planning.
No, I'm talking about, he's gonna need two appointed, if he, from his district, or from the county, I should say. Well, can? Is that correct, little dude? Okay, so that's the only one from the planning commission that wanted to be on?
I wouldn't say that.
Yeah, I got a feeling there's gonna be another one that wants to be on there too.
I just thought that's what he said at the meeting, so.
Okay. Why don't we just, why don't we, why don't we, why, why don't we appoint these and then we can make some appointments on the twenty-ninth? We can all kind of. I mean, Friday, we have another meeting. We can appoint them, so.
It's Monday. Um, so, next Monday at the planning commission meeting, we'll ask them to forward their recommendations to you, um, so they can be appointed.
Well, can, can you maybe, can, can you talk to Ms. Rose and kind of get a feel and then maybe sort of get this thing rolling? Let's try to make some appointments Friday at our retreat?
I think the discussion was to keep as many people involved, since the planning commission is going to be so heavily involved anyway, to get more people outside of the planning commission to be on the committee because, and, but still include a couple of planning commissioners, but they're going to be part of this sort of thing.
Right.
Kelly, didn't, um, didn't Mark Bennett express an interest as well?
Joe Davis, Mr. LaRochelle, yeah, Patty.
Well, this, you said it would be a part of the, of the process anyway, so.
You know Laura can't make it tonight, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, are we still meeting?
She wants to continue meeting. Um, Mark is gonna be there, I guess, leading the discussion, and Laura sent me all of her comments.
Alright, well, well.
All I know, Mr. Evelyn, is, um, when they were talking about it at the planning commission, I told them, and it is true, because we looked at what they went through with the strategic plan. It's gonna take people that are dedicated, to have time to spend with this, because it's not a one meeting a month and it's not something that is going to be accomplished in a couple of months. So, I think that when we talk to our appointments, that they need to know that this is absolutely almost a year or over a year commitment, um, with multiple meetings to get this done.
That's a good point. Okay, so we have a slate. Let's go ahead and point this slate, and then, uh, get with, come back on the Friday and see if we can fi- add some more to it. Alright, Ms. Watkins, we polled the members on the appointments of the comprehensive plan steering committee.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Next item is the appointment of the road viewers. Anybody having? Let's try to nail it down Friday. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes, sir. I'll do that.
Mr. Hathaway, you said a couple of things for other business?
On Monday, on this Monday, I participated in a webinar, um, hosted by VML, VACO and the Attorney General's Office. And the webinar was regarding a national opioid settlement. Um, and the Attorney General informed us that there has been a settlement agreement reached. Uh, to, I'm sorry, get my notes. The, the settlement involves, uh, three pharmaceutical distributors. McKesson, Cardinal Health and AmerisourceBergen, and one manufacturer, Janssen Pharmaceuticals, uh, which also includes Johnson and Johnson. Johnson and Johnson is the parent company. Uh, the proposed settlement requires the distributors to pay up to twenty-one billion dollars over eighteen years, and Janssen to pay five billion over no more than nine years for a total settlement of twenty-six billion dollars. Virginia has elected to participate in both of the two national settlements with the distributor and the manufacturer. Um, and along with Virginia's participation, there is an opportunity, uh, for localities to participate as, as well. Localities that are interested and participating have to register through the Attorney General's Office by January second of twenty-twenty-two. This money, um, the state, once it receives its money, um, they have developed a formula to distribute these funds and it's anticipated that the state could receive as much as five hundred million dollars. What the state implants, plans to do is fifteen percent of that settlement will be distributed to participating localities. Fifteen percent of that settlement, uh, will go directly to the state as far as administrative fees with little restrictions on how that money can be spent. Seventy percent of that, the remaining seventy, will go to the Virginia opioid abatement fund. Um, a little bit about that first fifteen percent. That fifteen percent will be distributed to localities based on, uh, the size of, of that locality. And if every locality participates, uh, New Kent's share would be point one-five-six percent of the five hundred million dollars. Other fifteen percent of the five hundred million dollars, which would equate to a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, uh, for New Kent County. Uh, which is a significant amount of money that has very little requirements. And what requirements they have, I'm sure there's some reporting requirements. We've not seen that. We're still early in this process. Now, the seventy percent of that settlement that goes to the Virginia abatement fund, fifteen percent of that will also be distributed to localities based on population. Now, that comes with a little more conditions and requirements. That money has to be spent on opioid abatement programs. Um, but that fifteen percent of the seventy percent, um, would equate to about eighty-two thousand dollars for the county. And that's if every locality in the Commonwealth participates. For those localities that don't participate, well, their share is divvied up amongst everybody else, so it's a potential to receive more. In order to participate in this settlement, the board will need to adopt a, a resolution. Um, the Attorney General is going to be putting out information probably within the next couple of weeks as far as some templates, uh, for the resolution as to what that needs to include. Um, if you are interested in participating, and right now I do not see a downside, um, we will begin that process and I will work with our county attorney, uh, to prepare a resolution to bring before you. Mr. Chairman?
So, I have a question. So, um, if we apply and if we were granted the money, would a portion of that be, um, will we have the ability to pay air, share into the Williamsburg, James City County Criminal Justice Board since a part of their board, um, works with opioid versus us paying? Ie, if they wanted fifty-five thousand, would that be able to be used to pay that portion for New Kent into their board? Say yes.
Right now, uh, Ms. Page, the fifteen percent, that first, uh, portion, which is a little over a hundred thousand dollars that's estimated that would come to the county sometime in twenty-twenty-two is what I've heard from the Attorney General. that's estimated that would come to the county sometime in twenty-twenty-two is what I've heard from the Attorney General's Office if we part, if you choose to participate. Right now, that, that money is unrestricted. However, there is a possibility that the final settlement will require some strings attached in the form of abatement. So right now, the answer is yes, you could do that. I, I, I can't speak on what the final settlement would be because I don't have that information yet, but there's a possibility it could be restricted.
And I don't know our share into that, but I'm just asking if we could since we getting ready to go into, um, budget.
But right now, as it stands, right now, the, the answer is yes, it could be.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at the requirements on that. Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lockwood?
I, I think it would be wise for us to, you know, join this. It's obviously impacted our community. I, and I, I know firsthand some people that have been impacted directly by this, so, as well as our sheriff's department. It puts a huge burden on them as well and, uh, not just financial, but psychological. So I think it would be wise for us to, you know, join with this.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lockwood. Anybody else? I think, I think we're pretty much all agree with what Mr. Lockwood said.
So do we need a motion?
No, at, at this point, we don't.
Okay, I gotta prepare one. Resolution.
The document that I've, I've passed out is a request, uh, for the board to approve a budget transfer. Uh, this is for the purchase of a software package called Archive Social. Archive Social is, just as it states, it's an archiving software for social media. I am the board's appointed FOIA officer, Freedom of Information Act officer. Therefore, I am responsible for all requests for information from, to the county. And, you know, I get nervous each year during the general assembly because several years they've tried to push in legislation that as FOIA officer, I could be held personally, uh, responsible for Freedom of Information Act requests. So I just say that to say that this is something that I take very seriously as far as following the state's Freedom of Information Act laws. One area where I do think, uh, we fall short and, and we have, that, that we are a little weak in is, um, our social media and websites. By state code, that is a public document and we are responsible to provide any post or any information that we post on any of our social media accounts. Twitter, Facebook, website, um, Instagram, I, I don't use all of them, but yeah. So this archive, uh, this software, uh, will provide a storage place for all posts. Um, and it's stored by date. Uh, we can query this by date. We could query it by person. So if someone asks me, uh, comes in and asks the county for all social media posts relating to this so, subject or a specific topic, we can also query it by topic. So, and, and I see this software is software that a lot of, um, other localities who I've, I've spoken with are, are starting to use as, as well. I think it can really keep the county out of trouble, um, and allow us to more effectively respond to Freedom of Information Act requests. What I'm proposing is for us to try this particular software for the rest of this fiscal year. And that cost is three thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars. Uh, that will give us an opportunity to determine if it works for us or if it does not meet our needs. I believe that it will. Everyone that I spoke with, other localities appear to be content with it. Um, but this cost that's before you and the amount of the budget transfer that I'm requesting is to pay the annual fee for the rest of this fiscal year.
Anybody have any comments?
What's the total, total, uh, I mean, I know what this is.
Yeah, the total, I believe it's, um, I want to say four hundred and fifty dollars a month. Or it might, it's approximately four hundred and fifty dollars a month.
Mr. Hathaway, just curious, um, do we get a lot of social media FOIA requests?
We, we get some. Um, I can tell you, we get a lot of FOIA requests. Um, and I tell you, uh, the sheriff's office gets it just about every day, um, it seems like. Yeah.
Are we charging people for these?
And, and you know, some of those documents, when they come in, because people don't know exactly what they're looking for, they're saying, we want any and all documents referring to this issue.
I mean, I know the schools right now, I've spoken, spoken to some of the board members and superintendent, they're having a, a time over there. See, I mean, cause I knew that they take a lot of time to put all that stuff together and the time that staff puts into it is not, whatever they pay is not, does not make it up by any means. So would this help time-wise putting stuff together?
Would this be something that would carry through with the schools as well? Or is this just for county information? Is this something that the schools could partake in as well?
I'd have to talk to Archive Social to see if they could use our license. I would imagine they would probably have to purchase their own license. To my knowledge, they don't have this type of software right now, but we can definitely talk to them.
But this will cover the sheriffs, all of our departments to include the sheriff and all, hiring all, okay.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Have a motion if they don't.
Do you have anything you want to add? All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Page?
No other questions, the comments, the discussion. I move to approve the proposed request to transfer three thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars from the reserve for contingency account to line item one-one-one-one zero-two-zero-zero-dash-four-zero-three-one-seven-zero professional services for the purchase of Archive Social software.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Watkins, we polled the members?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Anybody have anything else?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know if you guys have gotten any emails. I've got several from, uh, some concerned people with the electoral board, um, where a week before election day, they're being told that they cannot work the polls unless they're vaccinated. And I'm not sure if that's been addressed. I think, Mr. Hathaway, so, someone said they thought you had responded to that, but I think I told them that we would have a meeting this morning. We would at least address it.
It's my understanding, and I, I saw the email yesterday, an email was sent out to the electoral workers from the registrar, uh, rescinding that requirement.
Yes.
All right, yep. Anybody else? Tell them.
Motion to adjourn.
So I just polled, hold on, me, read the next meeting schedule first. The next meeting scheduled of the board of supervisors will be held at six P.M. on Monday, November eighth, twenty-twenty-one, and the next work session at nine A.M. on Wednesday, November twenty-fourth, both in the boardroom. The board will also meet for a budget retreat in a joint meeting with the school board or?
Not with the school board, but with school staffs, school administration.
That's what I thought. On Friday, October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, from nine to twelve-thirty at the New Kent Forestry Center, one-one-three-zero-one Pocahontas Trail. Tiller's got a motion for adjournment. Poll the members, please.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye, we're adjourned.